Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good night and welcome to Jazzy Conversations. I'm Tief.
And I'm Gigi.
And we're excited to be here.
Listen, thanks for checking in.
Welcome to Jazzy Conversations. I'm Tief.
I'm Gigi. Here we are. Tief, what's up, man?
Little history lesson today.
Oh, I'm ready for some history.
Yeah, you're gonna enjoy this one.
Yeah.
Because it talks about, she's gonna talk about civil rights. She's gonna talk about back in the day, a pillar school in the state of Connecticut, excuse me, state of South Carolina. And I know these Jesse Jackson.
Yeah.
From Greenville, South Carolina. So she'll speak about all that.
So she's gonna talk about all that. I can't wait to meet her. I mean, I'm always love, you, you always give me the energy. When you get excited about a guest, I don't know, I get excited too.
Absolutely.
So Tief, we have Thanksgiving's right around the corner, right? It's right around the corner. I know it's big for you, it's big for me. What's your favorite Thanksgiving dish?
Okay, oh, look at you conversely on me. I like it. I'm gonna come back out. I'm gonna come back out. I like that. Okay.
What's your favorite?
So, so rest in peace to my mother from Greenville, South Carolina. Mom, of course, everyone eats turkey, but mine, my mother was, her thing was chopped barbecue. I'm a, I love.
Well, you did just say y'all from, well, Greenville, South Carolina.
Chopped barbecue, of course, mac and cheese, candy yam, potato salad.
Favorite. Favorite.
If you give, okay, because she goes on, I'm serious. Between her and my sister, we have dishes all the way out. So give me a plate, I'll put chopped barbecue, mac and cheese, candy yam, collard greens, and stuffing. So you give me that on one of those big hefty, hefty plates.
Yes.
Those five things, and then I have to have two things. My mom made a mean, mean, mean sweet potato pie. And I also like peach cobbler.
Oh, man.
So that's, that's southern for me.
I think, I think I'm really hungry right now, which led to the question.
And I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna boom, give it back to you.
You give it back to me. I've been trying to get myself together so I can eat everything I want with guilt, guilt free on Thanksgiving. My favorite, so you know, we're a little different. We're not, my family is not from the US. So black beans and rice, everybody comes, that's a staple. That's my mother's, that's my mother's Cuban, that's her, that's, don't, don't even ask anybody else to make it. That's my mother's dishes. So black beans and rice, and then we make a bernil. Bernil is, it's like roast pork, but it's not, but well, that's what it is. And you know, you get that, that, that skin to crisp up just right, and you get the piece, oh, so good with the gravy being dead right. Now, the other piece for me is, is, is yams. I love them.
Oh, of course.
I love yams. So I've, I've been making the yams the past couple of years, and one year I couldn't find the, the sweet potatoes I wanted, and I, I came upon Korean yams. Who knew? Changed the game for yam making. Listen, I'm just telling you, if you bake, if you make, if you're the one that makes sweet potatoes for your house, try the Korean yam. It has amazing, everybody's asking, listen, you can't mess with my yams. They're the best. And then sweet potato pie.
Sweet potato pie.
Sweet potato pie, and all, all, like, we do all the desserts. I do all the desserts.
Okay.
Cheesecake, deep chocolate cake with choc-
Oh, deep chocolate. You hear this?
Chocolate cake with chocolate and caramel. So it's like a turtle cake. I can't wait for all of this, Tief. I'm hungry right now. I'm hungry right now, y'all.
Listen, next week, we're gonna be sitting down tearing it up. So before we dive into our plates.
Yes.
Let's dive into Ms. Lillian Brock, Brock Fleming.
Yes.
All right. Listen, you like that one?
I like that. I like that.
I hope you guys are ready. You ready? Here we go. Welcome to Jazzy Conversations. I'm Tief.
And I'm Gigi.
Ah gee, I'm excited about this one.
I know you are.
Because this one right here goes back to our hometown. Our family, the Roberts, is from Greenville, South Carolina. And my cousin Bernard, who's a godson to Mrs. Fleming, said, Tief, you have to have Mrs. Lillian Brock Fleming on the show. She has, she's a historian, she's a city council, and also I-
A math teacher. I saw that. Yeah, okay.
So, so we're excited to have you on the show. Are you excited to be here?
I'm excited to be here. I feel very honored to be here as well.
And we're, we're honored to have you. We, we, you have a lot of history down there in the South, and we want to get into that. You might, yeah, if you move it over a little bit, if that's what you're trying to do, yes. Okay, all right, so.
There you go. You're right there, smack in the center. Absolutely beautiful.
Beautiful, beautiful. So we want to go back to the beginning. You have an amazing story. We want you to just tell us your story. Where, now, where were you born and raised?
Okay, I was born in Greenville, South Carolina, on the southern side of town, only called the southern side of town because we were at the Southern Depot, Southern Railroad. And since people in, in my community worked there, then we were from the southern side, still use the name, but we were actually on Amtrak.
Oh, okay, okay.
Wow.
Okay, okay. And so siblings, are you the only child or siblings? How does that look?
No, I am the youngest of, of three children. I have an old, old, much older brother. And he is like, he was like 18 years older than me. My mom's first husband passed away, and then she married my dad. And my brother, Reverend Dennis Brock, actually was in class with your mom. Graduated in 1966 from Sterling High School.
Sterling High School.
You all have deep roots together. Yes.
Sterling High School.
And we're gonna get into Sterling. I definitely want to get into Sterling High School because it's a pillar in the state of South Carolina. Now, now, you're city council, but let's go back to, now, you were in school when it integrated in the South, am I correct? You remember integrating? Okay, how does that look?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, how does that look?
I do remember in the early 60s, we had the Greenville branch of the NAACP and all of the branches in South Carolina. The students, the young high school students and college students would do sit-ins for libraries, for lunchroom counters, and trying to eat there. And they even did sit-ins in churches, in white churches as well. And so one very important thing that just happened this year is 2023. This is the 60th anniversary of the lunchroom counter at SC Cressis, Peterson versus the City of Greenville. Peterson was, was James Peterson, one of the students, and there were 14 students who sat at the Cressis lunch counter and asked to be served. 10 of those students were, were 16 and older, so those 10 were arrested. The four children who were 14 and under them, those children were not arrested, but they were held in juvenile detention. And the, one of the NAACP president and his wife stayed with the children and holding until the judge could rule on it. But those 10 children who were arrested because they sat in the lunch counter, we took their court, their case was taken to the South Carolina Supreme Court. And of course, the South Carolina Supreme Court upheld the city of Greenville, which the law was that blacks and whites could not eat in the same room together. Anyway, well, the NAACP took them to the Supreme Court. And then Supreme Court in 1963, it ruled that South Carolina overturned South Carolina ruling and said that they were in violation of the 14th Amendment by discriminating against these young people. What's so significant with this is the city of Greenville and four other cities in America were a part of this Supreme Court case. And when they said it was against the 14th Amendment, these young people are the reason that we can go to, people of color can eat anywhere. And can go to any hotel, go to any restaurant, eat anywhere you want to because the Supreme Court said it's against the law to discriminate against people where they eat and where they can go.
Wow.
Now, what other cities? You said Greenville, and it was four other cities you said or states? What was, do you remember those schools? I mean, it's states or cities?
It was four other cities. I, I'll have to go back and look at my, my notes. One of them I know was in, I think in Mississippi.
Okay, okay.
And, and another one, and then three others was something, but it is part of the Supreme Court record because I read it for our 50th anniversary of the Greenville branch for NAACP.
Now, you were, you were a young person during those times. Were you, were you actively involved in the sit-ins and the opportunities to really protest against segregation?
Well, I, we, I protested, but I was not old enough to, because I couldn't be arrested. They didn't allow anybody at a certain age to go. But I did the marching and the, we did the going door to door to register people to vote. And at the time, I was 15, and it really hurt my heart because there were people who I knew, but they wouldn't open the door for us because they were too afraid to register to vote. And we had, we had young white, white boys or men, I'm not sure who they were, they would chase us around. Every time they would find us going and knocking on doors, they would chase us around in the cars and shoot above our heads and call us all kinds of names, et cetera, whatever it is. And so it, it was a terrifying time. But at the time, you know, when you're young, you, you're just scared, but you're not, you're not really thinking about the significance of what you're doing. And how if these people were a little bit, were a little bit mean, and if it was like in dark, we probably would have been killed, but like it was in the daylight.
And as we know, history tells us that some people were indeed killed and harmed, and you were, you were spared from that. So I thank you for your courage for doing that. It definitely took courage.
Now, you, did you go, okay, so my mom used to tell me stories about Greenville because you have Jesse Jackson down there that she says, you guys should walk to school with Jesse. Were you friends with Jesse Jackson?
Well, I was a little bit younger, but, but he and my husband played the same football team together.
Oh, wow.
Before he went to college and, yeah, we, we go.
You're breaking up, Ms. Fleming.
While he, to see his mother.
Okay, I'm sorry. You, you broke up. I'm sorry, the internet broke up. What'd you say?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I see it's a little slow.
There you go, there you go, there you go. You're back. Now, you were saying, you were saying something about Jesse?
Oh, yes. We would go over to his house to see his mother, to see him and his mother, and, and I, I used to work at the post office with his father. When I graduated from, while I, it was a part-time job I had while I was in college.
Okay, okay, all right. So you, you got a chance to see firsthand that, that movement, how Jesse started moving with the civil rights and everything. You started to see, you was able to see.
Well, well, yes. He brought Dr. King to Greenville one time because of Clausen's Bakery. And we've got a monument up for that because Jesse marched for days until they would allow blacks to be truck drivers and salespeople in the Clausen's Bakery store, which was a big store at that particular time, big warehouse, and it was good money for people of color. And so Jesse came, brought Dr. King to Greenville and et cetera, but you know, I was a little bit, I was not allowed to go out at certain times, and so, but my husband was able to. He went with his mom, and so he helped, helped to set up the chairs while they were having a program. And Dr. King's wife sang for us.
You had better than a front row seat. You have to be active. What, what we get to now revel in, a lot of our freedoms. So amazing, yes.
Oh, yes. My mother was one of the ones that marched, that they marched on the airport because they would not let Jackie Robinson sit. They wouldn't let them sit in the, in the open room, the waiting room, because they said they were, they were African-American. Well, the, the minister who's, who led our NAACP youth, his wife said, oh, no, no, I'm tired. We sit down. So they sat there until the police came and everything, you know, whatever it was. So what happened was, it was, I don't know how many hundreds of African-Americans, that Sunday morning, they got together and they marched to that, in the airport. And that was the last time they, they were not allowed to sit at the airport.
Talk about change.
What was that Greenville-Spartanburg Airport, Spartanburg-Greenville?
It was the, it was the downtown airport, downtown Greenville Airport, yes, sir. It wasn't a great big one yet.
Right, yes. Wow, wow. Now, now, so I know you went on to Furman University, which is a great school. You ever heard of Furman?
I have, I sure have.
But before that, because you're, you're into civil rights and you're, and you're a historian, now, what kind of student were you in high school? Were you into history back then?
Oh, my brother was into history. I was into everything. I was into reading, writing, you name it.
Did we ask what everything is or less?
Everything was. I was, I was an academic person. I was more interested. I read everything profusely. And I always wanted to know about what happened and who did it and this, that, and the other. And I was a member of a lot of clubs and organizations. And, and so I was one of the top 10 students when I graduated. And so Furman wanted to integrate in order to hire this new president.
Okay.
And so they, they, since Sterling was the largest African-American school, they went to Sterling. And asked them to give them the names of students who they thought, you know, who met the criteria and who could, who could attend the school. And so I didn't know until later that my mom and dad told me that I was one of the ones selected to, to possibly attend Furman if I wanted to go. I said, and as, you know, 17 years old, why would I want to go to Furman? Who do I know there? That's my first thought. But of course, you know.
Am I gonna have a good time?
Who do I know there, et cetera? And it was like, mm-hmm. But, but at that time, you know, my mom, dad talked to me about the significance and the importance of it. And, and that as soon as I didn't feel comfortable, you know, you just let me know and you don't have to stay there. Well, I met Sarah Reese, who had, who was one of the singers at, when Dr. King came. And she was an opera singer. And she, Sarah is, she is still to this day my best friend. She just retired from the New York Metropolitan Opera Company. And, yeah, she traveled, she was, she was hired as soon as she graduated from college at Furman. And she was hired by the Chicago Lyric Opera Company. Then she did, then she, from there, she went to, ooh, I don't know how many countries. Germany, Russia, Portugal, Spain. I do remember that she got stuck in an insurrection in Portugal. And I, and she called me, she said, listen, gotta get out of here. And so at the time, I wasn't elected official. And I called our city man, city attorney, who then called the State Department, and they helped her to get out of, of the country. Because all Americans, nobody could leave. So, you know, it was a wonderful thing to be able to, to have the position to be able to help her out at that time.
That's right.
And so, but she and I were the first females to graduate from Furman. And then 2004, they had a new president, a female, the first female at Furman.
At Furman, mm-hmm.
She gave us an honorary doctorate degree.
Ooh, beautiful. Congratulations. Beautiful, beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Now, you were telling me that your family is close with the, you were telling me about a very important mayor at the time that they had there. Remember the mayor that you, I can't remember his name. You went to school with his sister, his daughter at Furman? I don't have my notes.
Oh, at Furman?
Yes. Remember you said his daughter went to Furman when we spoke? You said the mayor?
Max Heller.
Max Heller, yes, yes. You were telling me his story.
Max, oh, yes. Max Heller was a Jewish person who, who escaped the Holocaust.
Okay.
And, and he got a job in Greenville and married a young woman there in Greenville. And so his children, so he became the mayor of the city. And this was before, before I was elected mayor, this is while I was still at Furman.
I'm sorry.
And he was so proud, and he talked to us. He did a lot of different things for our community. Yeah, I was, I was still at Furman at that time, and he did a lot of things for our communities. Communities where there were a lot of people of color there. He worked on to be sure that we would see the same type of services from the police and from transportation and customer service, public works, everything. He wanted to make sure. He met at our churches and wanted to be sure that we were all being treated properly. Because he remembered how his family was killed and how he had to run and be away from his family to escape the Holocaust.
That is, that is amazing. And so, so did that, was part of that connection to him, what inspired you to get into politics?
Well, what really, what truly inspired me, what truly inspired me was, they had planned to run a major highway through my community.
Yeah.
It was going to displace over 1,100 people. Because it was, they, well, some of the people in the community, they want, well, tear, they wanted to tear it down because it was just poor people.
Yep.
And they didn't have any money anyway. And, and, so I was truly inspired. I began to go to movements and to the meetings where they would have the public hearings. And the NAACP president at that time had become the president for the nation. Our, our professor, now, our local president had become the national president of the NAACP.
Okay.
And so, and he laughed at me. He says, now, you're getting hostile. I said, hostile? I said, these people talking about tearing down my, my community, my whole community where I was born. Anyway, so we kept marching and we kept attending meetings.
Yes.
And so, right before I was elected, the State Department, Transportation Department decided it was too costly to move all of those people and to build that road. But if you look in America, you will find that most of the communities where people of color live are always divided by some type of hierarchy. Several of them. We have two communities where African-Americans bought houses. They ran those through those, so it was difficult.
Yeah.
Now, was that West Greenville you're talking about, West Greenville?
Yeah, West Greenville is, is part of my district as well. Yes, see, southern side is, is part of the, the western side.
Okay.
You leave, you go under the train trussel and you get to West Greenville.
Okay.
And, yes, so it was a part of, part of the process as well.
So you had been an activist, really trying to impact change from outside of the system, and then you crossed that road and said, I'm gonna try to change it from inside the system.
Oh, yes. And I was, I was asked, but at the time, I was pregnant, so I didn't want to do it. And it is amazing. I, I was, in fact, when I actually won the election, I was eight months pregnant.
Now, now, you were, you, you were the mayor of Greenville. Is that what you're saying? Did you say you were the mayor?
No, no, no. I have a title. I'm the mayor pro tempore. The mayor pro tempore is elected by the council members that when the mayor is unavailable, that particular person will do all the presiding. When the mayor is out of town, that person, if there's a situation, that person is the spokesperson and is the person that works with the police. When, if something like that happens. So it's just a title that you get, not by being elected, but by the, by the council member that you serve with. And I'm, I'm, I've been there before. I, I got tired of it, then I came, came back this time. And of course, the mayor will not be in town tomorrow, so I'll have to preside at our meetings tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
So, so you said, so your, your first born, was that your first child that you were eight months pregnant with at that time, when you were elected?
That was my, that was the first child that I gave birth to. We had other children through, through my husband's previous marriage and through adoption.
Oh, right. I think I did read somewhere like 13 children between the two of you. Am I right? Am I wrong in that?
She has bad connection.
10.
10, 10. Oh, I added three. I added three. Maybe I'm prophetic. Let's see.
Guess what? That's okay. We probably had them in the house anyway.
Now, Ms. Brock Fleming, how important is the church community in the South, South Carolina, going back into, you know, those days? How important is the church community?
The church community, and it still is, it is the basis of our foundation and our security. The church helped us to move forward. In training the young people to go out, to, to sit at the lunch counters, to go to, to the library, to do the marches. It was the church where we went to for our, for our help and for our training, for our sustainability. If we wanted to meet, it was the church because it was the place, only place that African-Americans owned. It was our church. It was our community. And there, we not only got some training, but we got a lot of Holy Spirit and some great choir.
You need that for the travel. That's right. That's right.
Now, what church do you attend in Greenville?
Mountain View Baptist Church. I still do.
Oh, okay. Is that the church you grew up in?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Deep, deep, deep roots there. Can I ask you, what's ahead for you? What are you, what are you, what are you looking forward to in your career and in your life?
Well, I'm looking forward to young people moving in, taking over.
Absolutely.
Because a lot of people forget that the civil rights movement was moved by the young people because their, their parents would be fired if they did anything. And so the young people, that's why they marched. They marched in order to help their parents to live and to set a legacy, and that's what I really wanted to do. Well, my husband and I have taken our children on marching drips. They, they were not quite as, we didn't train them well because they were ready to fight. They were ready to fight. As soon as somebody called them out of their name, they were, oh, my God. So I was doing, go stand with your daddy. Go stand with your daddy.
Your receptionist.
I said, Lord, people shooting at us. I said, oh, Lord.
Oh, Lord.
Now, we're gonna end, but I want to talk about Sterling High School. You-
Yes.
Sterling's, tell us about, for the people that don't know about Sterling High School in the South, talk about it.
Okay, Sterling High School was one of the first African-American high schools built in South Carolina. It was one of the largest schools. In fact, I learned that there were, in order for children to go to school, high school, and they didn't have one, they would have to go live with relatives in Greenville so they could attend, so they could get a high school diploma. So it, so it's truly historical, built in the early 1800s. And we, in fact, in, on September the 15th, September the 15th of this year, we had our 137th reunion.
Wow.
137.
137.
That's nothing to sneeze at.
137th reunion, and we had over 1,000 people in attendance.
Wow. That's beautiful. What deep history.
So Greenville has one of the most beautiful downtowns. If you ever get a chance to go visit Greenville, South Carolina, it's, it's the downtown with the trolley and everything. It gives you that southern feel. It's beautiful. And they have statues of the high school for kids that graduated. And, and, and what year did the school burn down, Mrs. Brock Fleming? What year?
It burned down for the first time in 1967, the year I graduated.
Oh.
Okay. You said the first time.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, and then it finally burned down in, in 69.
Oh, my.
Okay, okay.
Oh.
Wow.
The report is that it was arson.
Oh.
Okay.
That's horrible.
Wow.
Yeah.
So for us, Sterling High would be like a Hill House up here, a pillar school.
So a pillar in the community. This is where everybody is- So a pillar in the community, this is where everybody is atta-, uh, attached to it in some way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
My goodness.
Ms. Fleming, this has been amazing, this has been an amazing interview. We just wanna thank you for coming on. Yes, we wanna just thank you for coming on and giving us some history from the south.
Yes.
And, uh, I know Gigi was gonna be very excited about that.
As I am, I mean, a true soldier and, and a veteran in this civil rights movement, I mean, I just, it's amazing, I know you've got stories on stories of what you've seen and done, and so thank you for sharing here.
So thank you for coming on the show, on behalf of Jazzy Conversations, I'm Tiff.
And I'm Gigi.
Ms. Fleming, have a great night, take care.
Thank you so much, I appreciate this, may God bless you.
May God bless you, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
That's a lot of history right there.
Oh, my.
I'm so, I'm excited, I was so excited to have her because she's from, it's almost like you having someone from your mom and dad's hometown.
Absolutely.
She's from Greenville, South Carolina, and when you say the Roberts family, that's where all my family.
That's where everybody's from.
Absolutely.
And she's still pushing it along.
And she's still pushing it along, so my cousin Bernard, big shout out to my cousin Bernard, and my aunt Patricia down there, and I was like, we, you have to have her on. And, uh, so that was, that was great, I enjoyed that one.
That was great.
You had a good time?
I did, as always. Man.
We'll be back next week.
Yes.
On behalf of Jazzy Conversations, I'm Tiff.
And I'm Gigi.
Have a great night, guys, take care.